The whole meeting is ordered, please. Roco.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
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 Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge and conditions to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I seek approval of the agenda, but we have one, another ordinance that we need to discuss. It's a conditional use permit for the Mathias warehouses development located west of Albano Drive and east Agnes Drive in the city of Tonnytown, Arkansas. Is that correct, Brad?
For the amended agenda?
Yes.
No, it is for the approval of final plans, ordinance.
The CUP is on there.
The one he's got listed up there on the screen.
Okay. Well, this is also up here.
Oh, she may add it, I don't know. But it wasn't.
This wasn't in our packet, was it?
No, that's what he's saying. He wants to add this. Final plan.
Yeah.
So what this is, is that ordinance is that we have done already and we just need to.
Finalize them, accept them.
They're incidental reviews. All we're doing, the city's accepting the dedications of right of ways, easements and such. These are incidental reviews we've already done.
Yeah.
We do this quarterly basis.
I think the last time we did it, we found my address was listed on one of them.
Your parcel was listed there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind adding something like this to the agenda, but we really do need to get things out of time because we do sometimes find mistakes. So with that said, I would rather not add it to tonight's agenda. I know it's a silly thing and I, if you guys feel opposite of that, I can be amenable. But I just want to make sure we have a chance to go through it. What do you guys think?
I would like an opportunity to investigate each parcel number and make sure we don't have what happened last time happen again.
Yeah, I agree. Anybody else?
I don't have a problem with that. I'm okay with that.
With, with not accepting it or?
Is there any timeline crunch on this at all? So it's by.
Okay.
So we could vote on it two weeks.
Are you guys going to take it to council?
Yeah.
Pending, there are no mistakes. I mean, I think, I, I agree that it's probably a cursory thing that we do. I understand that, but we did find the mistake at one time.
Sure.
But I think as long as there are no mistakes on it, barring that there are no mistakes, I don't see why we can't vote on it in two weeks. I mean, everybody's going to have a chance to look at this.
I did give it, I did submit it Friday and Jamie was not here. She wasn't here Monday and I asked her about it today. So I thought you guys should have had time. So anyway, that is, that is no worry.
Mr. Martinez? Yeah, are you okay with?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're just, if no mistakes are found, we're gonna, this will go to?
Just keep your agenda as it is.
Okay. Well, so Mayor, what was that that you handed me?
The one from Mathias?
It's already on the agenda.
The number five one, that was then.
Which, which number or letter is it? Is it eight?
Is this the CUP or is this the?
It's the CUP.
The LSD?
Yeah.
The CUP is eight A.
Yeah.
Good. So now I guess I seek approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roco.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Next, I seek approval of the June 4th minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 4th minutes. I read them earlier, yeah.
I do need a second.
Are they not in the packet tonight? Okay. They should probably be in the packet before we approve this. Well, technically, yeah, but nobody's looked at them yet.
I looked at them.
I didn't, yes.
Did you guys see your email?
That was a twenty second.
Twenty second?
Twenty seven.
Oh, sorry, twenty seven?
I may have, I just, there's a lot of emails. That's probably a little off topic. May I ask a question?
I'm guessing you can.
Okay. Well, you're the guy in charge.
Okay.
Hey, just out of curiosity, is anybody else not loving the Dropbox thing?
It doesn't bother me.
It doesn't bother me.
I used it at work a lot, so I'm used to it.
I mean, I use Dropbox, but there's just a whole bunch that gets dropped in there at a time. If you guys are cool with it, I'm cool with it. It's just, it's different.
I'm, I'm really struggling, so somebody smarter than me and Jamie's gonna have to help me on, on mine, so.
I'm sure we can find somebody.
Well, I tried to think of somebody and it didn't happen.
It's not me.
I will second the minutes.
Roco.
Larry?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Next, I will entertain comments from citizens out there that have any, any subject you want other than anything on the agenda tonight. Ms. Brown.
Nana Brown, eighteen fifty-one South Pinello. I just want to thank our mayor and our city crew and everybody today. You were even mentioned on television and radio for all your efforts. They mentioned our Tonnytown officers having to patrol and keep the traffic flowing and everything like that. You have done an upstanding job, each and every one of you. I think you all pulled together and you're, we're thankful for you. And I know your hearts are in it. It's a hard place to be and we appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nana. Anyone else? Is anybody online that wants to say something to us? You don't know?
No.
Yes.
Okay. We'll go to old business, which we have none, so new business. We will discuss an ordinance to approve Mathias conditional use permit. Mark, no. Brad, would you like to talk about that?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. And before you, you have a conditional use permit application that was voted on and approved by the planning commission at our last session. And this is for the Mathias warehouse. They are trying to construct four new warehouses along Agnes and Albano. And these four have been going through large scale, has been approved through large scale. But this conditional use is for the purpose of the zoning because it is currently zoned commercial. Everything around it is industrial and so that is why they have asked for the conditional use. They are going to have office warehouse space listed here. With what you see in the approval letter, conditions for approval must meet all large scale development process. There have been doing that. Project must develop generally as stated in the applicant's letter and which they have listed here as well. So I do have representatives here for you to discuss, but like I said, the planning commission has voted on this unanimously to move forward to the city council and they will entertain any questions you may have at this time.
Do we have any citizens comment? Council, would you care to discuss with our reps?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. My first one's to Brad. Brad, I couldn't come to the planning commission meeting and I tried to join the meeting. You know, it's videotaped on YouTube and then we've got the meetings and you've got to be let into the meeting. How does that all, how do people engage with us through that? Because I couldn't get in.
If you look on the agenda or on the agenda that's sent out, there is a code.
Yeah.
And so usually when you log on through that code, there's something that comes through teams that says somebody's in the waiting room.
Right.
And we'll let them in. We've done that through, actually had a meeting today.
Yeah.
Which they use the code we provided them. So there is a code that's out there and it's a standing code.
Yeah.
Both for planning commission and city council and so.
What I did is I went to Tonnytown website, found the meeting agenda and found the code and did all that to get in and sat in the waiting room and didn't get in. One of the questions that came up to me, and this might be something that comes up in the large scale development, is the, I think we had an issue with the metal on the outside of the building.
The facade?
In the brick.
Yeah.
And stuff like that. Is that going to be addressed in large scale development or is that?
That was, that was addressed through a variance, which was denied.
Okay.
We only had four people here. It was a tie two-two. They will be resubmitting this as a waiver because where we get confused sometimes is whether it's going to be a waiver or a variance. And waivers has to do with our development code. So when it comes to anything as the facade, it needs to be a waiver. The variance has to do with zoning codes and so there was mishap on that, but it, the variance itself got denied. So they were probably bringing that back up as a waiver at the next planning commission. That will be for the facade.
Okay.
That will be something that we discussed. It does look good. They are doing plenty more of the vegetation, more of the landscaping than required. Looks very good. So from the planning standpoint, we did recommend it at that time. So, but it did get denied.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, that was just my only concern is I couldn't get in to voice anything there, so you know.
And the next, the next meeting before you, if you want to try it out, and we've done that before, try it out and we'll make sure it's working.
Sounds good.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I would. Regarding the current area is C2.
Correct.
But the future land use category, I know we spent a lot of time on residential, commercial use. I know that is what it is, but will you tell me about residential, commercial?
Yeah, we, we put it down here as how it's defined. It's going to be a mix of some commercial and non-residential development, residential and non-residential development. It is excluding heavy industrial uses going forward, but we do not feel this is a heavy industrial use. It is going to be considered a warehouse, but they're going to have office retail space listed there as well. So the future land use, this is what it's qualified as. And like I said, one to make sure you have the definition there. Going forward, I don't know what the plan will be if it ever is changed, but that is what we have listed as commercial use.
Okay, so the idea here is that, that we, if, if this is approved, that we would be putting a general commercial something, right? In this case warehouses, in an area that we had considered previously to be residential?
No, no, this is, this, all this area is industrial.
Okay.
So, but going forward, there was, the future land use was along the sides going forward, there could be some commercial use, but everything right through this area is going to be industrial and that's why they're asking for the.
So it's residential, commercial use?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Or residential, commercial core or whatever. Because there's residential around the area, but there's going to be commercial along the sides.
Yes. And, and the, and I'll, I can let them address this more, but you know, the parcels that are to the north, more toward four twelve, we've really stressed to them, we want to keep that a commercial or retail space, not so much industrial. So, but we did not see an issue with what they're wanting to plan here.
And how close is this to the, the back where Fletcher is?
Oh, it's kind of in the middle. It's more, it's more toward the four twelve.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, council?
You guys have any, how much of this is going to be retail office space versus warehouse space?
I think on the plan, Connor Threet, Crafton Toll. I think the plan, I think there was about five hundred square feet, maybe up to a thousand of kind of retail where you walk in, see the products, be able to buy them and then the back will be where the store is.
Okay. And that's, and that's per unit?
Per, yeah, per unit. They're, they're four very similar buildings. They're kind of mirrored. There's slight differences in all four of them, but they're all kind of designed together.
Any renderings?
Brad, do you have any of the renderings with this condition? I don't know if you can show them or?
Yeah.
And if you don't have them here, if we've got them on site, we can, I can always kind of swing them.
And is that per the original agreement or, or plans? Was that commercial? Was that part of this from the very beginning?
With this, with this development, yes.
Okay.
They always had that kind of retail aspect up front.
And I heard that you're from Crafton Toll. I didn't catch your name.
Oh, Connor Threet.
Connor?
Yeah.
And your last name?
Threet.
Threet. Thank you.
Thank you.
I totally didn't get in on the planning commission meeting, so that's, I've got probably questions I shouldn't have to be asking here.
No problem.
Sorry.
Concept looked good.
Did you want to say something else, Mayor?
Are you grabbing those, Brad?
Yes. He's looking. Look, he's looking.
And can I ask you one question while you're scrolling through back there, Brad? The RCC, isn't that high density residential typically in other areas? Like I think of, for example, around Steel Crossing in Fayetteville, there's the apartment complex with commercial businesses, retail businesses in, in there. Isn't that kind of the concept of RCC?
Mark, maybe you want to address it better? I don't know. I mean, this.
I don't know how their zoning is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure about Fayetteville's, but this is, this is the way it was just classified when looking at the comp or the, the comp plan.
I thought I remembered that from the big study we got. I may be off base.
Yeah, but that's what I, that's what it's. So what you'll see, this, this is the plat, the layout, site plan, what they're going to do along Agnes and Albano. Are you looking for this and more for the building structure?
Well, a little bit of all of it, but if.
Whatever you've got.
Yeah, whatever you've got is helpful. And we don't, I mean, I can, I can come by and get this from you at some other point in time if.
Well, and what I'm showing you here, this, this is not, I don't believe this is the current rendering. They did bring some current renderings, right? Connor, you guys had some different things. This is what was originally presented to us, but they do have, they have some different facades that was presented at the planning commission, which looks ten times better. So if, yeah, if you do want to see those, we can definitely.
Thank you. It's always helpful for me to, to see stuff. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Anything else, council?
I'd make a motion to move this to council.
I'll second.
Roco.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes. Next, we will go to a discussion of the finalization of bond refinancing. Mr. Lake.
Before we get started, I would like to say something, Mark. We had a meeting. We all went over everything that we needed to go over and so I have changed my mind. So I just wanted to put that out there. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Well, we need to try to make a decision, I hope, this month. I don't know if we want to wait till next month, try to get this on the election. That's why Kevin's here. Kevin and I talked a little bit. We'd like to try to get the bond council involved, putting the ordinance together, so y'all would have that for the council meeting. It seemed, when we've been discussing, that a hurdle has been the water tower. And whether or not we want to take that into consideration of this bond issue, or do we want to look at, you know, well, Stevens mentioned about, you know, borrowing money from them, along with the application that James has already submitted to the Arkansas Natural Resources. But let me just take you back a little bit and I'll tell you why I think we've recommended, and I won't say we, if you want me, I'll be glad to say that we, we have recommended. We actually met, staff met, just to kind of look over and talk through this. Did you know what the city has done when they decided to get off Springdale and get their own water from Two Ton? It was required for the city to connect down at Fairmount to Two Ton, so they built transmission line all the way out to the tower, the original tower out here. We're in construction now and hopefully maybe after this meeting today, we might be completed here on this part of the transmission line. That'll actually now bore underneath four twelve and be ready to make connection there. And then the final piece of this, what I call larger infrastructure to actually get us into a good position water-wise, is to actually put the tower in. And so when you look at the pieces that are needed and, and you look at the ten-year plan and all these projects we've got on here are basically of the ten-year plan, it's part of that larger piece of which has been funded through sales tax, not revenue bonds. So I'm taking you through this because I feel comfortable enough to say this is that I don't think that it's a good decision to take this through and do a revenue bond. And I will tell you why. One is, is this is a part of a big plan here. Second is, is that it's going to take a substantial rate increase to your customers, okay? For water. And they're going to tell you exactly how much that's going to cost. You're not going to have any control of that. And so I think when you look at the larger position of the infrastructure, to me is this is probably the most, best way to go about it. So we are recommending, at least the staff, as we went through it, yeah, is that, the, let me pull this out because I gotta have it up, is that the police station would have seven million. And that's a, I can't tell you how important that is. Streets, Fletcher, I will tell you, here's the problem going on with roads. Originally, two years ago, Garver estimated the cost of Fletcher between Barrington and Klink at three million dollars. Zach looked at it again and did some numbers that they're seeing from street projects around northwest Arkansas and he's estimating close to five million dollars. So what we'd like to do is put six million and I tell you, I think we can do some things. You know, we don't necessarily have to put, you know, five hundred trees in the, the right of way and, you know, we can probably shave some of this stuff off. As you know, we're going to get some construction done off, up the Barrington subdivision, which is about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the other thing that's come up, instead of maybe going towards Wildcat, which is going to take some substantial design and work through on a high water, or not water, electric lines, go through a transmission line going through there, is maybe go ahead and finish out Fletcher on this east side. We get a lot of complaints about Fletcher where it narrows in, you know, from the school there at, is it West? What's the name of that subdivision? Westbrook? Yeah. It narrows in, runs narrow all the way to Piazza and then finally kind of widens out and it's probably not in the best interest safety-wise that, you know, we not just finish that out. So we can do all of that with the six hundred dollars that we've got currently allocated. So that's a recommendation. Got the water tower in there at five and a half and then we've got the community building and parks at a million dollars, which totals up to nineteen million. So that is our recommendation to the council and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Mark, your recommendation is where it's proposed in the red or the cost in the black?
Say that again, Tim.
On your, on your grid here, on the far right, it says proposed in red. Is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, where it says recommending.
So the water tower says five million, not five and a half?
Yeah.
So the extra half goes to the police station? Okay, so you mentioned revenue bonds earlier. I know that revenue bonds, just so you guys know, a revenue bond is a bond that's generated with the revenue from a project to pay back those that bought it versus a general obligation bond, which is the general obligation of the city. A city can raise taxes where they can't do that with a revenue bond. So the revenue bonds usually have a lower credit rating, which I suspect would, in this case, just like every other case, means it would cost us more money?
It's negligible, yes.
Okay, so if we go with the revenue bond, you're probably right about that. I'm still not crazy about where rates are. Rates went up last July. At least the federal funds rate went up last July and kind of hung out there. Where, where do you see rates today? Have they changed since June?
No, not much.
Yeah.
I mean, it spoke today, you know, wasn't really much impact. I mean, the market didn't react much. We'll need one next month, I think.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, you know, I mean, I read an article today predicting a pretty sizable recession by the end of the year.
And maybe there will be.
Maybe there will be, maybe not.
And if so, then maybe rates will come down. I, I totally understand the need. I get it. I understand that we can't just drum up nineteen million dollars. But on your grid here, it says impact fees for police, impact fees for streets. How much does that move the needle, Mark? In this case?
You have any idea? I think the question is, is who, who should be paying for this major infrastructure? I mean, you know, again, you know, that's why impact fees were imposed. I mean, when you had a two hundred and fifty thousand gallon water tower that was supposed to serve the city and then all of a sudden now, believe it or not, and that's why this is really important, is I think, James, you had told me that they're up to a million gallons a day and that's not good.
How long will it take to get a water tower standing if all this sails through?
You have any ideas, Jim?
Nine months?
So the, the difference is significant from an interest rate each year, but I mean, on nineteen million bucks, what do you think it's going to cost between the average of what it's been our whole life, which we don't know, and where we are now? And it's not even, I mean, it's just an exercise, probably not even worth having right now. What we have to decide is how clean is your crystal ball and how, how well can you read the future? Right? Aside from that, if we need it, we do it. I, I hate debt. I hate debt personally. I hate debt in governments, but I understand when you've got a price tag like this, that where else are we going to come up with nineteen million dollars?
Well, we're trying to dig ourselves out a little bit right now. And I think if we can dig out and get ourselves stabilized a little bit, I think we're going to be fine. But the growth came so fast without a really preparation, to be honest with you. And so I think, you know, this bond issue, I think, is going to be, as I told you, you know, there are, there are none. If you look at your ten-year plan, you know, there isn't any major water infrastructure scheduled for the next seven years.
Yeah.
And the next one is possibly a new water tower out there off of Old Sixty-eight. That's the next scheduled thing, where the, the major emphasis will be on your ten-year plan will be on sewer. So, but, you know, I just hate to see, I hate to see the rate payers have to pay for something of which, you know, it kind of wasn't their fault.
Because water rates will have to go up in a revenue bond if we go that route. Yeah, well.
This is the last one we really need to do when it comes to major infrastructure regarding water.
We, we can always put it on a ballot and let the people decide, right?
That's exactly right.
Mark and James and staff, I just want to say thank you for doing the homework and, and, and bringing it to our attention on how much it would raise the rates. I've done a lot of homework on this. I feel really good understanding things. I feel like we've all heard multiple times now the explanation of how this works. So I feel like we all should be at a good place to be able to make this decision. I, I understand now about the water tower going on here a little more and I thank you for that clear definition. I think this could be the right route to go for sure, so.
I do have a question.
I do have a question. I mean, man, the only struggle that I have is really wanting to finish out that east-to-west vein, and obviously, we won't have the money to be able to finish out Wildcat. What, you know, what is that estimated cost there? I like the idea, if we're not going to have the money to do that, to make Fletcher better.
I think we estimated around $2 million.
So 2 million would finish out and get us all the way through Wildcat? Give or take.
I will tell you, Amber, it's just a matter of time before there's a head-in collision there at Piazza and Fletcher because they're not paying attention.
Oh, that's for sure.
It's so dangerous.
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, just kind of FYI for you, I mean, we saw a plan today, which we talked about. It's why all of a sudden Marsoni becomes a major road. But, you know, there's a subdivision, the plat that was submitted today. We reviewed it. It's right on the corner, Marsoni and Clink. It's an R3. They're not changing zoning, by the way. I think the word is out, that we're only going to accept R3 and nothing higher. So, but yeah, I mean, that's going to be developed, and we're trying to work maybe to have them develop the whole road of Marsoni, at least down through there, so. But we'll see. But, you know, we're going to have to, as you guys know, I mean, we've got to get less pressure off where everybody's going to 412. We've got to move some traffic.
We do. But you think that project is $2 million to finish out Fletcher through Wildcat?
I think so.
So how far does that push Wildcat? If we finish Fletcher, Wildcat will go all the way through.
Well, let's kind of see how our impact fees go. If you look at the amount of development that we got kind of in the play right now, I mean, we've, I mean, we've probably, with this addition, would have close to maybe 450 homes times $6,000. That's quite a bit of money. And there might be another property that develops out there that, you know, would help us with that. I'm pretty confident that, that we can get Wildcat done. I mean, you know, Walser's another one. I mean, there's all, it's a lot of roads that need to be done, but, you know, financing, we need to figure out how we can do that. That's why I'm here.
Sooner rather than later.
So in the talks of all this, you know, and, you know, I've been, I've been trying to see how I'm going to address this with you, because I've went out and started getting my signatures, you know, to rerun here, and that's one of the biggest things that I'm getting, you know, when I talk with the citizens, is I'm getting, you know, questions on roads and when we're going to do better on roads. So, and that's always been one of my biggest things.
One of the challenges is that, one of the challenges, and I think a lot of, you know, you hear some people talk about the fact, well, I pay taxes on roads. Well, you guys see how much taxes we get on roads? We get nothing.
Yeah.
Get nothing.
And that's not what, I'm not getting the, you know, I'm paying interest.
We are, we are applying, Mayor just signed a letter. We are applying for a state aid grant to go ahead and overlay North Barrington.
Yeah.
Okay? And we're going to be working on Liberty, so you all in, you guys in your zones going to be, yeah, like two.
War, no, war two, war two. I'm helping you out. So looking at this chart, you know, it says that streets priority is very high. We took, in your proposed, you said, you know, the cost says 5.5 for the water tower, but we moved the 0.5 to the police station. Why would we not move that to streets, if any? I mean, did, did something change in what you proposed for the police station that we needed to raise it another 500,000?
Okay. I mean, the cost on this sheet says 6.5, so I'm just, I didn't know why we just kind of played with it and moved.
The original cost was, you're right, 6,500,000.
Okay. I mean, in my opinion, I would, I would bulk up streets. I mean, I don't, 6.5 for police and, I don't want ANRC to regulate our rates, but it sounds like even this refinance on this bond is going to do that, too. So.
Well, the refi in the bond won't raise the water rates, but it's, it's going to cost us some money.
Indicative.
On account of it being a higher interest rate.
I would just say throw as much money towards those streets rather than, I feel like in that proposed, it looks like that 500,000 was just, oh, let's throw it in the police department and.
I actually suggested that. That was my fault. I suggested that, and the reason that I suggested that, to go to the police department, is because I know that prices are going up, and I know what happened with the fire department.
Well, everything, yeah.
And I know that that, I would rather have more cushion to be able to make sure that that gets completed, and our impact fees will be coming in to finish up the roads.
That, I understand that, but it sounds like, I mean, I just heard that Fletcher was going to cost three, and now it's going to cost five, so that's going up, too. I mean, it's just not fair, in my perception, that we just throw that at the police department. Not that, I mean, I don't think anybody, especially Corey, would think that I don't have any, you know, reserve for the police department and funding them. But I feel like streets are a bigger, and according to this, this diagram, I mean, priority is very high. It's the only very high on the, on the priority list, so I feel like the amount that we put towards.
It was, it was number one.
I would, I would, I would feel that that would be the biggest chunk of change that we're going to have through this refunding of 19 million.
So let's talk about this police station for a second. I want the cops to have everything they need. I want it to be well-equipped. They do a great job. We just came through the Citizens Police Academy. They did a fabulous job. But 7 million bucks for a building, any building, just seems like a lot of money. And, you know, it just could be that I haven't built a $7 million building in a while. But is there a way that if we set aside maybe five and it costs seven, that we can pay as we go on that? Or is there no way to do that? Like, if we've gotten the bond 5 million, is that all we can spend in the police station? Or can we pay some extra? We paid extra on the fire.
That's a packed question.
Hey, if only I knew where he was.
Well, if it's on a bond, you can only spend what's approved on the bond. So let's assume we were in the middle of the fire station, and all we had was 5 million, and we got to the point to install the garage doors or the windows, and that's another 2 million. The city better have it because it's the only place you're going to get it.
But that's my question. Like, we, we can do that if we need to.
We have the fund.
If we had the funds.
Yeah, the city has the fund.
I understand.
Which I think we had that issue because of something in the architectural realm. We had some weird thing happen, but we had the money in a money market that was growing interest, and we were able to save, we were able to recoup some of that mistake by where, by gaining, you know, capital gains and dividends on, on that money that was in the bank.
And part of the mistake on the fire is when the bomb was approved, and I can't remember the exact amounts, it was like 5 million. Whoever was on that committee and went to the, went to the builder and said, you've got 5 million to spend. That's not a true statement, because that's not how much we're funding. You have to take out fees and all the other stuff, so we've got to make sure we know what that price is and stay below that.
Okay.
To get your confidence.
So, do you feel confident that we can avoid that with the police station?
First of all.
All right. But you'll, you'll be a part of that, right? To some extent?
I'm saying for a fire truck right now.
You're buying a fire truck? Very well.
Your guy's saying?
No, we, I see. I thought you were going to buy us a fire truck.
I just did not want us to get the city in a bind, and I wanted to make sure that there was enough money in that part of it, that we would not be in a bind. So I, that's why I thought that we should have it toward the police department, after seeing all the things that Ryan had to go through with fire. And Missy, you know how, what a struggle it was for us to try to, to stay within the means that we had here in the city. It was very difficult.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't know how we need to do it, but you, if you want to know some ecstatic citizens, you finish out Wildcat and give them relief off 412. That would be the biggest thing that we could do for them. I don't know how we'll do that. I don't, I don't know how to finagle these numbers. I, I'm fine with the way that they are. I just, we have got to finish that project. And, and, you know, the impact fees that could come in, my mind goes to, well, if a recession does happen, people aren't going to be, they're not going to be buying homes. And so how long would it take us to get the amount? Because that, you know, if you mentioned 400 homes at 6,000, that's over $2 million. I mean, it would cover that road, but if the homes aren't selling, people aren't building, I mean, there's so many things. I just think it should be a priority before it's a problem and that we just keep kicking it down the road. And I know you're not kicking things down the road. You're like, let's get things going. But that should be a big priority to me. That should be a huge priority, just the relief off 412.
Yes.
So I don't know how we need to get that done, but that needs to be in the works.
This may not be a popular position, but in light of everything that's been said, you can take the million from community building and parks and put it in streets and just scratch that part of the issue. I mean, I know it's an important thing for us, you know, the lack of green space is pretty obvious all over town, but in the pecking order here, it's dead last, and I don't think there's any argument. So that's an option, too, just completely remove it.
I like, you know, I thank you for bringing that up, but I'd like to put, I would, if anything, I'd flip the, we got the extra 500,000 that's floating from the water tower, swap that with the community building and put the million toward street and, and give at least 500,000 to community building and parks. I like that. Not, rather than just killing it altogether, 500 of that and throw the million at the streets. That puts the streets at seven. You can leave the police station at seven.
Because we have invested a lot of money in the master park.
Right.
And there's a lot of things in the works there. And the citizens have talked.
I get that.
And we have a session for them to come. I think we need to show them some progress towards that, because the citizens have spoken a lot as well.
I bet you if you put streets and parks up to a vote, I think I know which one would win hands down.
I'm not saying they're not going to vote for streets, but I feel like we need to put at least something towards what we've already started promising.
I appreciate that. I'm just bringing it up for, to discuss, so.
So, Missy, to your point.
And the grants, we have to make sure that we have.
To be able to match them.
Do we have to have a million dollars to match the grants?
Mark, how much was that exactly to match the grants for parks?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going after one this summer, they're 50/50, maximum 400,000, so you're going to have to come up with 200,000.
Right. So we don't necessarily have to have a million dollars there. I know that that isn't popular, and it's not my preference either, but we do have a beautiful park, and we don't have beautiful roads.
And if you want to know my, my skinny on it, on a personal note, I told Mark, I'd rather have parks available for people than anything there, believe it or not, on a personal note. But it's not me personal that's doing this, and so, you know, you got to look at it from a council standpoint, but, but if, if we don't do the community thing, if we don't start, this park, we just, we don't have enough parks right here, you know? That's the age-old argument out there. What's, what's a park consist of, you know?
Or you're behind about 60 acres.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, and people far smarter than me have come up with these numbers, and can Corey build a, a police station for 6 and 1/2 million? You know? Can we put, can we build a water tower for 5 million?
I doubt it.
There it is, you know?
We'll have to, we'll have to get funds either still borrowed from ANRC, the extra that we need, or take it out of reserve.
So.
We don't have much left in there.
Right.
But if we borrow the remaining from ANRC, they're not going to increase our rates by that much, rather than the whole 5.5, correct?
But it does give them on trade to raise our rates.
Some, but not as much as 5.5 would give them, I would think.
Right. Yeah, if it's not the full amount, they will.
Be considerably less than if it was.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Mark?
I like the 6.5 for police, 7 for streets, 5 for water tower, and 500K for community building and parks.
Danny, can you say that again, please?
6 million for police, 7 million for streets, 5 million for water tower, 500K for community buildings and parks. That gets you the 19.
Mary, have you asked for citizens' comments yet?
I think it was one of the first things we did.
Okay. I think Mr. Fott probably has something to say, and I think you, you know, here we go. I know you'll keep it short and sweet.
James Dean, 1025 Trail Wood Street. Like Danny, when I was out collecting my signatures, everybody wanted to talk about roads. I want to throw another fly in your ointment here. Clint's, Clink, however you want to pronounce it. You got Palaceros coming in. You have this new subdivision that wants to come in at the corner of Marsoni, and you have Bariloche that's going to be built. And I understand TriStar is probably going to build across the street now in an R3. A few months ago, you had a guy come in that talked about what we need to do now with streets. Clint's, if you've driven it lately, you can see it's starting to crack on the side. So A, we're going to have to get dump truck traffic off of that road, make the, them build their own road out of the county to dump, or B, you're going to have to overlay that road or widen it. And that's what everybody that talked to me about roads, they were happy about Fletcher, but they're more worried about what's going to happen with all the traffic that's coming to Clint's or Clink. So, you know, before you start putting this one here and this 7 million here, you're going to have to decide on that road as well. That's what I have. Thank you.
Mr. Fott, you have some words?
Well, not too much. Mr. Burris had mentioned, it's hard to tell what rates you're going to do, obviously. So the size of this bond issue means it's going to need, need a rating, or insurance, or both. So as far as impact of rates, it's going to be very similar. I mean, my, my guess is this is probably an A-plus rating. Maybe, maybe it's just an A, but I think it's higher than an A-minus, at least on the surface, so.
But we favor that rating?
You do, but the reason you do is because it's, it's, well, more than offsets the cost with the rate benefit, so. Can I mention one thing, as you will talk about amounts per project, just to remind you, and I think everybody knows this, but you're going to, voter, whatever you decide, the voter's going to have to click off each thing, so they're going to have to approve, you know, the water tower, the parks, whatever. One thing they typically do, and this is, sounds a little not exactly right, since the numbers I've run shows a $19 million construction fund, but typically, when we start looking at multiple projects, I'll do a calculation. So if you tell me, for instance, we're going to need 6 million for the police station, I'm going to make a calculation, so that number's actually a little higher than that, just so you all know. If you're comfortable doing that, if you want it to be 19 million even, because that's what you think the voters will authorize, and that's what we'll do, and, you know, whatever project allocation, we'll get as close as we can. Typically, I'm going to include cost of issuance and debt service reserve calculation in that project fund, because the bond attorneys require us to do that. So in other words, that cost of issuing gets allocated in each project.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
You all comfortable with doing that?
Mm-hmm.
Certainly after you, you know, you decide the amounts, I can do those calculations. It's easy. I just want you to understand that it's going to be slightly more than 19 million.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
When you say slightly, are we talking 20?
Well, my quick calculation was 20.6 million total.
Mine, mine was in the 20 area, so it makes sense.
And, and keep in mind, too, as we size this thing, we don't know what rates we're going to do. We've got another six months' worth of collections, too, at least, before we issue 6, 7, 8, whatever it might be. So if the trend continues, I mean, the collections, Pat can tell you, obviously, has really done well this year, so. I mean, there may be some, some room, you know, to increase that a little bit, too. However, I will say, and I'm getting into the weeds, you know, the better that coverage, meaning the amount of revenues versus debt service, the better that looks, the better your interest rates, too, and the better your rating, whatever else.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
We appreciate you always coming and helping us out.
Thank you.
We do appreciate your time.
Mr. Latham, can I ask you a question? So understandably, we are in a tight spot. We're in a tight spot because we've grown a lot. Some of that, maybe we could have done something about, maybe we couldn't, but here we are, right? Without a time machine, what do we do? So as we look at these, instead of your chart, which understandably says, this is how the council ranked these things, and these are the priorities on them, you've done this for 40 You've done this for 40-plus years. If we had to prioritize this and what it means to running a city, not what we want, or maybe not even what the people want, but what makes the most sense from a city planning standpoint, what would you do? Is this exactly what you'd do? And so, that's why the council ranking of number one is in the second place, okay? So, you've got police station, streets, water tower and community buildings, parks. You say that's a tie, or was that, that was a council tie. Would you say that that's lower in your world than a water tower? I know that there's some obligations we have to make, and I'm not trying to make a judgment.
Parks are lower than the water tower?
Yeah. Again, I'm asking as a planner, not your personal opinion.
Well, I don't know, I'm the guy to ask you that because I'm an old parks and recreation director, so. I'm going to side a little bit with that, but, you know, in reality, and we are going to be raising our park fees. I'm talking about from, what's happening is, is most of the, most of developers today are not dedicating space for a park, neighborhood park, to be able to take care of all the kids that are in there. What they want to do is pay, right now, they're only paying $250 per lot. That's not very much money. And when you look at it, if they're selling a lot for, you know, $80,000 and they have to give up three lots for that park space, they're losing 240,000. Well, the city is losing big time.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we are very much looking at raising those. We're actually getting some ideas about what park fees are around the area, and I will tell them that it's much more than what we're paying.
Sure.
So, you know, I, I just feel like, you know, we've got an opportunity. I will tell you, the community building has been something that's been talked about. And I'm a big senior, senior citizen, that I would love to see a senior citizen building out of that community building. You can switch it up. But the needs of the seniors are getting worse and worse. They need to have activity. They actually need to have conversation. A lot of these people are homebound. They don't even get to talk to anybody. It's the way they'll be able to get up and do it. So, I have a heart for that. Maybe y'all don't, I do. So, I've seen it happen in the town I was in in Illinois. We build a really nice senior center. And there's well over 200 people daily come to that senior center.
So, do you think that that needs, as it's important to the city?
Now, I will tell you, I do think, I do think, and you know, we've got this, hopefully, this foundation is going to, yet it's 501(c)(3). But I do think that people are going to see that need and will dedicate funding as a tax write-off to something like the seniors or the community building.
So, can that help with, with that community buildings, parks in general?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay. So, okay, so that's good. Do you think that streets are more important than a, than a police station to the city right now?
Well, it's all about.
I'm not saying.
It's all about public safety. You know, I mean.
Absolutely.
I mean, if you look at the police department right now, I don't know how they function, to be honest with you, and.
They should not be in the space they're in.
Safety, got to keep this community safe. I mean, that's why people are moving here. They, they don't want to be in an unsafe where all of a sudden, you know, you've got murders every, every day, it seems like over in Fayetteville and Springdale. And we want to make sure that our community's safe. And one of the, one of the things Mike and I were talking about is, you know, that's one of the reasons why the zoning for R3 is important because that brings in a higher level income to be able to buy these homes, and that's the kind of people we want. I hate to say that, but that's true. But I don't know if I could say that, is there any difference between the police and streets? Streets are, you got to have to be safe. They have to be able to carry the maximum on it. So, I don't know if I could tell you that one is higher than the other. They're both very important.
Okay. So, looking at your chart, again, you'd say $7 million still for police? You wouldn't change that to the police station? He's in the corner, he's not paying any attention.
I mean, the police station is hard to judge. I mean, he's running numbers. He knows what his square footage is going to be, so the idea of trying to figure out how much it's going to be for a square foot, they've got some numbers from what the one they, you know, they Fayetteville just built and somebody else built one. You want to mention that?
Sure. So, originally, when we started looking at this, we went, we looked at a lot of different places and, and numbers are hard to look at with it because of, what's also factored in is the soft cost into that and, and the amenities at certain places. Fayetteville has indoor shooting range. We're not doing that. That's very expensive.
We can shoot people outside, I mean, things outside. Did I say people?
The, well, we went back to, to look at the fire station, which it has some different things in it. The fire station when it was built, I believe Chief Ramsey said it was $343 a square foot is what it came out to.
$343?
Yep, so.
And what's your price look like?
I estimate it high at 400.
Okay.
I don't see it building at 400.
Well, let's talk about the, the shooting range. So, if we don't have a shooting range there, where do you, where do you guys go for that?
And I just go back to the, the original ask was to build a police department that would house us for 30 years, to answer your question. It was the original ask of, of what I had to design with. So, that's what we worked towards to try to build.
Chief, do you think, so this 6.5, the original 6.5, would it be safe to say, like, that is with a little extra fluff? I mean, do you think, without cutting, trimming, you built your $16,000, that you could build one for 6.5? Do you feel like it's safer, I mean?
And that number too, and I don't know if Kevin has an idea of what, some of that, or maybe Pat, there was something with fire. Essentially, and I don't remember, I think you guys were kind of talking about it some. Basically, if, with the fees and everything else in it, the number that is there isn't the actual construction cost. So, I don't know what, what if it's, you know, 6.5 and we end up with 5.4?
Yeah.
You know, I don't know how much that is.
6.4 million is the, is the cost at 16,000 square foot at 400 per square foot.
So, you, you think you built a little extra fluff in on that number?
There is a little, yes.
Okay.
And on that, that's really, my hard, what I don't know how to answer is the soft cost side of that. You know, I don't know, looking in the future, everything's going to cloud-based. But when I price out, like our camera system, WatchGuard, which is now Motorola, if, if I priced out their cloud-based stuff versus our server, it's a big price difference. It's a reoccurring cost versus buying a server versus, I don't know that stuff, what we'll need, as well as, you know, tying in other things with, and we don't have an interview room. We've never had that here. So, having a camera system that ties in with WatchGuard or Motorola, all of that extra, I don't know. And that's where some of that fluff is. I just don't have a clue on that.
And soft costs can be worked in, correct?
Hmm. Yes. And that's, that's where some of that is. As far as what we build on the building, you know, and if there's any wiggle room on that, it's, it would be in the square footage. If, if we're, if we get into the build process and, you know, when we start pricing out the rest of this and, and we're getting way over, well, there's the needs and the wants and, and a square footage is an area that we need to make offices smaller or whatever we need to do there. I, I don't have plans to really take out chunks of the building, but if we can condense it down, then that's obviously something we would look at doing. I just, it's hard to look at. We're really going to have to travel to some other agencies and look at their police departments. Looking at what Springdale and Fayetteville built, we're not going to be there. So, having, you know, certain things in there, like our evidence, actual lockers and storage and ventilated, to where we don't have to smell that all the time and go in there and get lightheaded when you're processing and doing that. But also the security side of it, there's, a lot of agencies have lockers in a hallway that patrol go to and they're passed through lockers. They're one-way open, you put your evidence in, you close the door and it's locked. The evidence tech from the room on the other end of the wall is able to access that. And that's the only place and the only person that can. So, there's things like that that we've looked at in, in, in building into this. And the one thing that everybody that I've talked to said if, like, and one of our big problems now is our evidence, whatever we design that at, add 40% to it, 50% to it. If it's somebody's square feet, double it because that's one area that we always end up outgrowing. So, we tried to design and build that with that in mind. So, I mean, the, the soft cost is where it kind of gets me, so.
But that's included in this number?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I don't want to skimp on the police department for sure.
Well, my concern is if you're saying it's 6.4 to bill, I mean, I know there's, it's cushioned, but to bill, that's not counting the fee, right? I mean, that we kind of got wrong with the fire department.
Well, I think Stephen had mentioned, once we figure out where we want these numbers, he'll add in his fees. And that's where he said the 20.6 came into play.
I'm taking the construction amount. When you guys tell me we need 6 million or 6.5, then I'm adding to it, cost of issuance and this reserve amount.
And I think that's where the fire department goofed.
Yeah.
Because they thought it was the big ticket with his fees on it and they were thinking they had that money and they didn't.
Well, and, and, you know, I caution you here, if we have this huge jump in interest rates, then, you know, things change. Now, if we have a huge jump in interest rates, then maybe we wait and hope that rates come down. I mean, you know.
But again, we got to figure a number that the voters are going to approve. That's, I mean, if they don't, if they don't like the 6.5 or the 7, or, you know, they want to. It's, it's, yeah, it's dead, so.
What it's worth, I mean, I've had very few issues that failed.
Yeah.
Years ago, this, we did one for Connytown that failed prior council, but it was a long, long discussion and the city council was very divided on what they wanted to do. I think if y'all are, you know, if there's some consensus among you all, that goes a long way in, you know, signaling to the community to support it.
Yeah. I mean, with this 400 a square foot and coming up to 6.4 and there's some, some fluff in there, I, I feel comfortable with 6.5 on police. And like I said, the 7 on streets, 5 on the water tower, 500K on the community building, that'd put us at the 19. And then if we go move forward with that and Kevin has to put the other, he projected it being at 20,600. I feel like that would pass and we can get some funding for these projects.
You making a motion with those numbers?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Roco.
Could you repeat the numbers again?
Yeah. Police station, 6.5, streets, 7 million. Water tower, 5, community building, 500,000.
I've just seen the numbers for the park and we did all that work already. I feel like the million is nothing compared to all these others. And we paid a lot of money for the work already in the city. I would be comfortable with 6.5, 6.5, 5 and 1.
I mean, if this motion fails, we can have another motion.
Yeah, but we have to vote, we have to vote in the motion.
Yeah, motion's been. So, we have a motion on the table. Roco.
No.
No.
Amber?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
I'd like to make a motion for 6.5 for police, 6.5 for streets, 5 for water and 1 for city parks and community building.
Those numbers are 6.5, 6.5, 5 and 1, is that right?
Yes. That gives 5 million more to streets, which we all, of the, of the, it changes the proposed from 7 and 6 on the streets and the police.
I'll second that.
Roco.
Yes.
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 Now, I think, is that all the information you needed, Mr. Futt?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I was just, I'm Mark and said, you know, you want this ordinance for the next meeting until July 16.
I believe that you said we ought to get on this as fast as we can.
I would recommend that, so, yeah.
And I think we really would like to see that.
I'll call the bond attorney on my way out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good night. Thank you.
I hope we helped your night a little better.
Thank you, Mr. Futt.
I, I have had a request for a three-minute break.
Really? Awesome.
So, we are going to adjourn for three minutes.
Through this with you, tell you what it is. There are two roads that'll actually get an overlay. One is Cortiana, right over here, that's going from Henry Gattante all the way back to Bandini. These maps are kind of hard to see, but that's why I want to go through this with you. The other one that gets an overlay is Morsani, we're actually gonna go all the way back to Boltinger, you know, go to Klink. So those are the two roads that will be doing an overlay. Fog seal, crack seal. Now, these are, these are actually roads that are, we seal the cracks and we put the, the asphalt kind of coating on it. It's gonna be able to make these things last, as you heard James mention something about what's going on at Klink. Klink is the one that's gonna be getting the, the majority of this. It'll go from Dahl Road to Henry Gattante. So they're getting the fog seal and the crack seal. Ranale and Penzo over here in Westbrook area is in pretty bad shape, so that also is gonna get the fog seal and the crack seal. Now, these fog seal and crack seal will actually extend the life of the, the road between four to seven years. So if you don't do anything with it, it's only gets worse and worse. Then the last one we're gonna do is called an ultra-thin, bondable, wearing course. It's a little higher than the fog seal, it's lasts longer, it can last anywhere from 18, 8 to 15 years. So, uh, that's Liberty and that's going from Barrington to Artemani. Those will be the road projects, but currently out for bid right now. And, um, anybody have any questions on any of that? Roughly estimate is around 400,000, I think what the engineer said.
And when will this project be done?
Sometime this summer. Soon as we get to bid, um, we'll, we'll have a better idea about when they'll be able to start, whoever gets it.
So putting it out to bid, are we putting out each section individually or is it all one?
Uh, I think they indicated that they're gonna try to tie it into one contractor that can do it all.
Okay. So, uh, is there an order of preliminary to, you know, how, where, where they're gonna start, are they gonna, are they gonna?
I have no idea, but I, we will definitely get that information to you.
As we go, okay. Awesome. Well, thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Be light on me. Okay, that's just FYI stuff for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I guess nobody had any more questions for Mark, right? Okay, discussion's over. Next, we will have a discussion of an ordinance to amend, uh, yeah, chapter 2051, Water Service of the Tawnytown Municipal Code. James Clark, please step to the podium.
Yes, sir. All right, hopefully you've had a chance to look over the, the proposal. This was requested of Tawnytown by Two Ton, Benton, Washington Regional Public Water Authority, our water source. As I've mentioned a few times before, they're in the middle of some major improvements, about $500 million worth of improvements over the next few years. But one of the things that they're working on is a larger transmission line to get the water from the plant to their storage tanks at Decatur. And we feed off of those storage tanks, so they'll be adding extra storage there as well. So they ask us, ask all of the members of the Two Ton system to make sure that we had some type of, of water conservation measures in our code, because what we're, what they're seeing now with the growth and, and the dry weather, uh, we may have to implement some, some measures this summer and maybe even next summer. It's gonna be after that before they get that line completed to Decatur. So, anyway, it was funny, this came up today because in the, in the newspaper, Fayetteville is, is doing the same thing. They've, uh, they've already got the conservation in their code, but they're applying it to the east side of the city, um, asking people to water at different times during the day and, you know, alternate, uh, sides of the street, whatever, to not have that high demand all at the same time. So what we're doing is just presenting this and, and this code came from Bentonville. I didn't reinvent the wheel on this, just adjusted it to, to fit Tawnytown. And hopefully there's six different levels of conservation in there and, you know, I don't think we'll ever see the sixth level where, you know, we're rationing water unless there's some type of major natural disaster and, uh, we could get there. Tornado, earthquake, whatever it might be. Anyway, um, that's the, kind of the backstory of it and if you have any questions about it, I'll try to answer them.
I do have a couple. I mean, um, I appreciate you, uh, kind of giving us where the impetus for this came from. That was one of my questions is, um, whom had requested, who had requested it, I guess. The one thing that I had a question about is, you know, um, who, I suppose you or the mayor determine what is a shortage, right?
Um, we'll probably rely on Two Ton.
Okay.
We're not gonna issue a shortage unless they request it.
Okay. And is there a quantifiable measurable amount that determines what that shortage is?
Measurable amount of usage?
Well, I, I'm just wondering, okay, we know that, i- is that what it's gonna be based on, is usage rates?
Yes.
So if we exceed, uh, a certain usage rate, Two Ton can say, hey, you guys need to quit watering your lawns or quit, you know, I mean, some of these measures in here, obviously I hope we don't get to six either, they're pretty draconian measures.
I don't expect to see anything other than maybe a stage two.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I get it, it's, there have been some dry times and, you know, I've heard in the past and I may have mentioned it here before, that, you know, the next world war wouldn't be fought over oil, it'd be fought over fresh water. And, you know, seeing some of the things that you see, you know, it's, it makes you wonder. It just, I, part of this is a little, I mean, it's a little bit Big Brotherish to me, obviously.
It is.
So I have, uh, some trouble with it, but I understand why we have to do it. I just don't know if.
I mean, currently.
If they're making us do it.
Currently, Two Ton can put out about 18 million a day is, is the maximum, 18 million gallons. And, uh, last month they were already over, average over 15. So, by the, we're gonna have some, some water conservation by the time they get that line completed and can pump, you know, 20, 24 million gallons a day, uh, which will probably be the end of next year, by the time they get that transmission line complete. So I think.
And even then, but by the time we get that in, it may not be enough.
Right.
So, okay, that, that helps me, um, kind of get an idea where this came from, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, certainly not, not anything we're gonna implement, uh, unless we hear from Two Ton. Of course, one thing that would help us is, is if we had extra storage.
Extra storage.
Just thought I'd throw that in there.
The issue is just during the summer, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, cause you're mowing your lawn, you have a lot of gardens, vegetable gardens here in Tawnytown.
Right.
So, and animals, so, no, okay.
And it's actually not a supply issue because B related, my knowledge isn't gonna dry up, but it's.
Right, no, it's not supply, it's just getting it to the, getting it out to the customers.
Okay, anything else for James?
Of the 18, how much do we use?
Uh, a day, well, we had, uh, you know, I've mentioned that the reason for the tank is you're supposed to have 24 hours worth of storage. We've had, we had eight days in, um, June that we went over a million gallons a day. And if by chance we vote no on this particular verbiage, then what happens? Well. Does Two Ton take away their ball and go home? No, no, they can hit us with, uh, like, impact charges, um, not necessarily impact, but, uh, excessive use charges. But whether the verbiage is here or not, can't they still just slow down what we get or what we have access to? Not really. I mean, we're, we're pulling off of their transmission line that's, runs, well, from the plant, but mainly the line that's from Decatur to, um, Washington Water down around Prairie Grove. So, and there is a pump station between us and Prairie Grove, Washington Water. And that's all gravity fed, so really they can't regulate that, per se. So then, I, I mean, I, I've read it and I understand it, but I don't get it, right? I don't get why we're doing it if, I mean, there's, there's no teeth in it. Well, there is. You know, it does say in there that, you know, at, once you get to some point, we can actually shut the water off. No, we, we can shut off, but Two Ton has no teeth on us. Other than charging us extra.
They threatened to do so?
Not yet.
Who's the preventative measure?
It is, and, and, you know, we, honestly, we probably wouldn't have to have it in code, it just makes it easier to enforce. You know, if they called us tomorrow and said, hey, we've got to, well, which they did here, uh, uh, last month when the tornado hit Rogers. They called us because their, uh, intake pumps were down, their pump station that pulls out of the lake and their generator didn't work. So, um, we're kind of in a, in a good situation there because we have our emergency connection to Springdale. So Scott at Two Ton called me and said, hey, can you go on your emergency connection? And, uh, and we did, uh, we were on them for about 36 hours or something like that. But other cities don't have the, the ability to, or have a emergency connection. So they were implementing, uh, conservation measures in their systems. So then this verbiage becomes part of the water contract with every? No, this is not between us and Two Ton, this is between us and the citizens. That's what I mean. With the citizens, it's part of their new water contract if they're getting water from Tawnytown. So if somebody uses too much water, based on what seems a little nebulous at this point, like, how do we know how much is too much? I mean, yeah, we're not gonna be watching meters every day to see who's using, you know, what amount of water. But, uh, if, if we get the call from, from Two Ton that they're, that they can't keep their tank full at Decatur, so they're gonna start losing pressure downstream, then, uh, that's when we would get the word out to the customers that, hey, back off on your irrigation, watering and, you know, try to, try to conserve water as best you can. And why can't we do that now? We can, we can. Like I said, I just felt like, well, and, uh, other cities already have it in their code. I just felt like if it's in the code, we at least have some, some regulations. We've got it in black and white, what we need to do for each stage of conservation and, uh, and penalties for people that blatantly ignore it.
Gives you a backing.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I, I feel like everyone's pretty good now. If we tell them that we need to conserve, I mean, I feel like people are pretty compliant.
Sure, sure, I think so.
I do see where it's getting handy.
Not all people, even when we went, you know, uh, somebody was washing their vehicle, you know, we're, we're supposed to be conserving water? Yeah.
Right. Was it Danny?
No, it wasn't Danny. I didn't go buy a check on him, he probably was too.
I don't know, I, I.
With the growth that you're seeing all over Northwest Arkansas, uh, there's gonna be more of this in the paper, yeah, cause all the systems are having trouble keeping up, especially during the hot, dry summer months. What was your point, Amber?
I don't love this either. I don't know, I, I mean, I saw the notice too about conserving water and I know not everyone will listen to that, but we did. We, you know, stayed a water and for however long we normally do, we were very intentional about cutting that off. And, I mean, would it be okay to just, until that need arose, until we saw, okay, they're not listening, you know, this has become a problem, maybe implementing something at that point? I don't know, I, I just, I don't, some of the verbiage in here is a little scary.
Well, I mean, if we wait until the point where it's needed, it's, it'll take us a month to get it.
If you, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what things look like when you're in, but let's just say, you know, we get the notice, hey, you know, notify Tawnytown, we need to conserve water. And then you notice, I don't know what you're looking at, meters or whatever, okay? They're consistently not really conserving water. This is a, this is a, a pretty consistent problem. Before it becomes some kind of crazy issue, implementing something at that point, I just, if we're not, if we've never been to that point and I don't know how many people are complying with this, I mean, I, what do you look at? How do you know if people are?
Well, we just look at the, the overall usage, the daily usage that we get from Two Ton.
So when, when you guys, when you send out that kind of notice, did you see a decrease? Did you see that people were adhering and conserving and?
We weren't able to watch it then because we had switched over to Springdale and we're getting, uh, water from them.
Could we just kind of watch it for a little bit and see, I don't know, that's just, I don't know, everybody else may love it and that's fine, I'm just.
Yeah, I like your point there. I, I, it's, it makes a good point. I used to teach school and, you know, it was one of those things where, uh, you had one bad kid that could ruin it for everybody. You're punishing the whole class for the misdeeds of, of a few. I, I, I'm not, I don't think principally against some of the stuff in here. I just, I'm kind of like, uh, Mr. Bars, I, I don't know if, uh, now's, do we need to, I certainly don't see the need for an emergency clause right now. It, you know, it's, it, I, I don't know, it's.
Do you think it'd be, would it be okay if we just kept an eye on this for a little bit? If you felt the need like, okay, this has become a problem at this point, but not to the point where, oh, we've, it's a big detriment.
I mean, still, if we get the call from B, uh, Two Ton, you know, we're gonna put it out there that, you know, we've got to conserve water.
Right.
But we don't have any rules and we don't have any, uh, you know, any way to enforce it.
Right. But we also, I mean, we don't have a good number.
Like I said, we're not gonna use it unless we absolutely have to.
Right.
And, you know, the stage one, that's just basic water conservation.
It's common sense almost, yeah. I agree with it.
So.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not against everything, but, you know, it's, uh, the government overreach can, and I'm not accusing anybody in here of that, but, uh, you know, it can be, it can be an issue, so. If, if we could just sit on this for a little while and kind of study, uh, usage trends a little bit more and see, especially if it's gonna continue to be dry, I think that's be a good indicator, we might have a, a better idea in two months.
Well, like I say, that was the reason they brought it up, Two Ton, because they're looking at the usage trends and the, the future, uh, forecast, weather forecast for this area, so.
Well, it, it could possibly be brought up again another month.
True, that's true. But we're at the, at the peak usage time right now.
Yeah.
So we may still get a call from them before, before next meeting even.
And we could, I mean, you know, if that's the case, we, we convene in an emergency session and do it that way if we have to.
So they reached out to you?
Yes.
Said, hey, maybe you guys need to consider doing this before?
Yes.
It would be good to just see what usage looks like when we put out a notice to conserve, but.
So, Mr. Clark, uh, can you run a report now on usages for the last month?
Yes.
Okay.
And how many times have we put, have we had a? And how many times have we put conserve, have we had a, you know, please conserve water twice at this point, or has it just been once?
Just once that I'm aware of.
So we don't really have much to compare to usage, conservation, we just don't really have any kind of a.
But even if we need to conserve, right, I mean, we can ask people to conserve, right? And I think most people are going to do the right thing. I, I think anytime that we, we feel like we need to codify something to say, hey, you, you need to do this, you cannot do that, I just, I, I think it's just a bridge too far. I mean, we live in America, people get to make their own decisions, right? If they want to, if they want to spend too much money on too much water to pay, you know, to clean their truck or whatever, in a normal situation, big deal. I understand when we need to cut back. And I also understand that you, you know, didn't you know we're trying to conserve water and, you know, somebody decided not to? But I don't think that's the majority. So again, I'd rather not codify something that takes that, that ability from people away when we can just as easily say, hey, you know what, we need to conserve.
And I just want to say, you know, if we've given this one notification, if we get another one, I really would like to compare. If it's, if we're not seeing much conservation, I, I would have no problems implementing this. I just want to see that, I just want to see what folks are doing. Tim has probably a little bit more faith than people, I don't know, I'd like.
Maybe we should.
I have less faith in government, that's what I have.
I'd like to think that people would just listen and conserve.
And I was just getting ready to say the opposite. I'm fine with you conserving, but I'm not going to. And that's most people's attitude.
Maybe, maybe we put out a faux conservation notice and see what those numbers are.
See what happens.
You know, a mock trial.
Yeah. Anyway, however, this is fine.
Uh, yeah.
I just don't think I'm ready to move on this.
When you read the verbiage on this and, you know, the violations and the enforcement, it gets a little, I mean, it's real. But I could also see in a situation where a tornado comes through and, you know, they're trying to conserve, did it cost us? What, what did it affect us when we had to switch to the Springdale emergency transition and pull from Springdale?
We just paid a little more for the water from Springdale.
So I'm just kind of, trying to work that through my brain. The tornado came, Two Ton told us to reserve, we turned around and said, Springdale, can we connect with you? They said, yeah, you're, you're going to get your bill, you know? And so we're just going to pay a little bit more to Springdale. And we definitely helped Two Ton by not even taking from their supply. And then our customers didn't really notice the difference other than we helped ourselves save by not paying Springdale as much because we told citizens to conserve, correct?
Yeah, like I said, I don't know, we used about a million and a half gallons in thirty-six hours.
Through Springdale, okay.
I don't, I don't know that there was much conservation.
Right, so we can look at that, what did you say that number was?
About a million and a half.
A million and a half in thirty-six hours, we could look at today's thirty, you know, thirty-six hours in today. And there is no con- conservation going on right now, I would think.
Right.
So we could kind of look at those two numbers and see what, because we did, we, we, we told people, you know, conserve, and then we went to Springdale, so now we know we have a million and a half in those thirty-six. We can look at thirty-six from now and look what those conservation efforts were during that notice, during this thirty-six hours. I mean, we can look at what the temperatures were, I mean, after that tornado came through, temperatures were, what, eighty degrees? So we might want to look at something where we had eighty-degree weather versus today, you know, it's ninety-five degrees, so.
As far as the.
Stage one, stage two?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah. I'm just trying to keep it as fair as possible, you know, after we enacted that conservation notice, we switched over to Springdale, we used a million and a half in thirty-six hours. At those temperature rates, you know, it wasn't as hot, you know, right now, I switched, I'll tell you, my sprinkler system, it was on an every other day system, but now I put it on every single day at this consistent time. And I'm watering my grass, you know, so I know that.
What time do you water?
When, during, during that tornado, I'll answer your question in a minute.
Ask you a question.
During that tornado's, you know, time that I'm thinking of, you know, I didn't need to water it and it was eighty degrees. So, you know, eighty degrees, I'm not watering as heavily as I am in ninety-five.
And that's why the usage is up and why the demand is.
So that's what I'm saying, we can't take this thirty-six hours and compare the ninety-five degree weather to something where we had enforced, you know, enacted a conservation and switched over to Springdale. We'd have to look at something that was comparable to the conditions of the conservation time to get something that's more balanced. So that might help us get some numbers to where we can see, did truly, did citizens truly conserve to, uh, during that, that voluntary one, because that was voluntary.
So what time were you watering?
Six o'clock.
Two AM or PM?
No, it's ten minute, every section's ten minutes, six, six o'clock in the morning, yeah.
Hey, school, the best time to water is early morning or later and after the sun goes down?
Early morning, yeah.
There you go.
Well, I think I'd like to table this until, uh, some date in the future, I, I can't put a date on it. Maybe we can kind of look and see over the next, we know it's going to be hot for the next month. I mean, in three weeks, if you see that, you know, we're having some serious spikes and we may need to address this by the next cow, I think, you think that gives time to kind of look at some of these things? Like, I mean, we're in the hottest part of the year, like you said, so it's a good time to look at it, I would think. So, you know, my motion is to table this.
I think it's just a table.
Oh, okay, so, but it looked like there was a, an ordinance.
It is.
That was going to be sent to city council, so.
So if you table, then it does go to the city council.
Total to the next cow.
Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Thanks, Jake.
Misty?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tam?
No.
Did we have an E that I needed to, that I've forgotten about?
Yeah, we.
That's y'all, turn them.
We didn't, we didn't put it on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
Oh, it wasn't activated?
No, we, we didn't add it to the agenda.
My mind's failing me, so I wasn't for sure. All right, comments for our council members? Mike, you start us off, please, sir.
Uh, I really don't have a whole lot to say, just everybody be safe out there during the holidays. Supposedly there's more travelers this year than any other year in recent history, so be careful. Be careful with fireworks, and thanks for coming, everybody that's here, appreciate you being here.
Tam?
All right, so I graduated from the Citizens Police Academy last Thursday, and it was awesome. I was honored to participate, but I was terrible at it. I am a terrible policeman. I mentioned earlier, we shoot people, that was talking about me. I accidentally shot a hostage. It wasn't with a real gun and it wasn't in a real life scenario, but it was a real person. And anyway, I'm awful at it and, and these policemen that we have here are amazing at it. And I am so thankful for what you do. And I have, I, I've always had respect for you guys, but it's just at a completely different level. And you guys deserve to have everything. You deserve to have the best facilities, you deserve to have the best stuff, and I want you guys to have that. I think you deserve it, and we are working diligently to give you that and to give the community what they need too, right? We know that they need the safety that's provided by your department, and not just a department, your department. We know that we need streets, we know that we need green space, we're sixty acres behind, I think, is what Mark Latham said. We know that we need a water tower, we just discussed that over and over. And so we are working hard, we hear you, Tawny Town. I know I personally am working to give you everything that you want and need, I think we all are. But thank you for those of you that participate by coming here, thank you to those of you that participate by watching at home. And we're just going to keep working to, to give you guys everything that you need.
Daniel?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out. I too graduated from a police academy and that was tons of fun, tons of learning, you know, I learned a lot. You just never know until you're in the boots of somebody, what they go through on a day-to-day basis. And, yeah, you, you learn that these guys, it's not just a cop car, gun and a badge and you pull over people from speeding. It's, it's, there's a lot that's going through their mind as they're in uniform and on the clock. So thank you, Chief, for putting that on and look forward to seeing a great success with that program and as it grows, just kind of see that flourish. I did want to speak on something else, but I forgot what it was. But I, I, I think I'll just, if it comes back to me, I'll, I'll come back to it, but other than that, I'll pass it on.
Misty?
I just want to mention thank you to all the citizens that have brought donations. I'm going to be taking another load at the end on Friday of this week, and then we're, I'll kind of touch base with them again. But the First Baptist Church in Decatur is doing meals, breakfast, lunch and dinner every day, they're there from eight to eight. People impacted by the storms can go and get clothing, snacks, food, household things, I, it's, it's an amazing program. She walked me through, they have like a dressing room now with a closet where they can go and shop the clothes, and then they've got a whole snack room, and it's just incredible the way they're continuing to help the community because several of them are still just now starting to get back into a home or starting to rebuild a home. And FEMA and all of those programs are gone, they've come and done their part, and now they're still trying to pick up the pieces. So we may not see it right in front of us, but there's still people in our community deeply impacted by these tornadoes. So I'm going to continue to keep the boxes up for donations and continue taking loads as the, and until they tell me they don't need it anymore. So feel free to please continue to bring donations. Next, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Riley Tesaro, who we laid to rest last week. He is such a huge impact to our community, he was in the Air Force for over twenty-one years, he was our volunteer fire department for forty-plus years, and then he was on the museum board for eighteen years. He gave selfishly to our community for so many years, and I'm just so thankful for him and I'm praying for his family. I'll, I, he'll be someone I just never forget. And then last, the hundred and twenty-fifth Tawny Town Great Festival is right around the corner. Next week, you will see the girls at all the local businesses selling tickets for the 2024 Bronco right here across the street. It's pretty sweet, although I'm going to win, so, you know, you can take your chances and buy some tickets. But I'm really excited, these girls get scholarships based on what they sell, so support local. They're out there, it's getting really hot and it's the longest three weeks of their life as a teenager, so, and they volunteered to do this. So, like I said, you'll see them out there, it's a yearly tradition, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that it was coming up. And the Great Festival is August sixth through the tenth this year.
Amber?
Well, my husband and I both participated in the Citizens Police Academy, and it was the highlight of our week. Chief and his guys, they, they, the classes that they taught, built on each other, they're very well organized, and I know they're planning to do that every year. I already miss it, my Thursdays just seem a little empty without coming up here and hanging out with these guys. We learned so much, but we had so much fun. I also learned that I am, I'm not meant to be an officer and I may shoot you if you're innocent because I did during the academy. But anyway, we appreciate our officers, we really do. I, I, you take a class like this and you learn more than you could imagine just about their day-to-day jobs. And really, even that's not even touching, touching every aspect of it. So had a great time, appreciate you guys tremendously, and I already miss it, so, we both do.
All right, the only thing I got to say is Cory turned me down because he told me I could not ride shotgun when I arrived with mine, so. I feel you guys, I really do look forward to the next time you do that because after they've done this glowingly reports, I'm going to try to do it myself, so that's all I've got, thanks, guys. Mayor?
I took it as well, it was awesome. I'll, I'll take it with you, I, it was awesome, I loved it. Don't forget, next month is the Great Festival and our meeting is going to be changed to Monday, August fifth, instead of Tuesday because of the Great Festival. So make sure that you have that on your calendars. Also, Jamie, my assistant, is getting ready to go on maternity leave, she's getting ready to have her baby. So we have a table set up out front if anybody wants to bring diapers or anything, actually. She would greatly appreciate it and have a safe, safe Fourth of July.
Now, I am looking for an adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Here we go, aye.